Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to bring our regular June 7, 2021 Warren County Board of Commissioners regular monthly meeting to order. If you choose to do so, I ask that we stand for a moment of silence, a prayer, and a pledge of allegiance, please. Dear God, we gather today in the intent of doing good work. We seek to represent our community, our county fairly and well. We ask that you give us wisdom as we go through these tasks. May our efforts be blessed with insight guided by understanding and wisdom. We seek to serve with respect for all. May our personal faiths give us strength to act honestly and well in all matters before us today. In all things, we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice pro all. Thank you. You may be seated. Ladies and gentlemen, before we get started, it is always a remarkable time that we are able to have professional staff come on board before us and with us to do the work that is necessary in order to have a successful government. Tonight, we have a brief moment where we'll be swearing in the deputy clerk to the Board of Commissioners, which is Ms. Ella Dowdson, please. So at this time, I believe Mr. Kingsbury is doing that, so I will turn it over to him. Thank you.
You have the choice to swear or affirm. You're going to repeat after me, alright? Is he good? Is he ready?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to bring our regular June 7, 2021 Warren County Board of Commissioners regular monthly meeting to order. If you choose to do so, I ask that we stand for a moment of silence, a prayer, and a pledge of allegiance, please. Dear God, we gather today in the intent of doing good work. We seek to represent our community, our county fairly and well. We ask that you give us wisdom as we go through these tasks. May our efforts be blessed with insight guided by understanding and wisdom. We seek to serve with respect for all. May our personal faiths give us strength to act honestly and well in all matters before us today. In all things, we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice pro all. Thank you. You may be seated. Ladies and gentlemen, before we get started, it is always a remarkable time that we are able to have professional staff come onboard before us and with us to do the work that is necessary in order to have a successful government. Tonight, we have a brief moment where we'll be swearing in the deputy clerk to the Board of Commissioners, which is Ms. Ella Dowdson, please. So at this time, I believe Mr. Kingsbury is doing that, so I will turn it over to him. Thank you.
You have the choice to swear or affirm. You're going to repeat after me, alright? Is he good? Is he ready? If you repeat after me, I state your name.
I, Ella Dowdson.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
Ella Dowdson.
Do further solemnly and sincerely affirm.
Do further solemnly and sincerely affirm.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Endeavor to support.
Endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of said state.
Of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge.
To the best of my knowledge.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
Ella Dowdson.
Do further affirm.
Do further affirm.
That I will.
That I will.
Well and truly.
Well and truly.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Executive Administrative Assistant.
Executive Administrative Assistant.
To the county manager.
To the county manager.
And deputy clerk.
And deputy clerk.
To the Board of Commissioners.
To the Board of Commissioners.
Of Warren County.
Of Warren County.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my skill and ability.
Of my skill and ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Ms. Dowdson, welcome to the team. I would caution you that you'd be having any words that you want to express at this time. Thank you. Welcome aboard. Alright, ladies and gentlemen aboard, we've had three public hearings tonight that we need to consider. And the first one that we're going to be dealing with is the, in 2019, the North Carolina General Assembly adopted a reorganization of the state's planning and development regulation statute. To confirm to this new, to conform, um, form to this new statutory framework, the county's development regulations need to be updated. As a result, the Warren County Board of Commissioners conducted a public hearing to consider comments regarding a series of mandate Texas amendments to the county land use ordinance in accordance with NCGS 16, excuse me, 160D, including zone ordinance, abandoned mobile home ordinance, subdivision ordinance, flood damage prevention ordinance, addressing road naming ordinance, and historic preservation ordinance. At this time, I will yield to Mr. Kingsbury, who has been spearheading these regulations. So at this time, Mr. Kingsbury, I will yield to you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, Sheriff Harrison Davis and the rest of the Board of County Commissioners. If you look on the screen that way, it's moved, so I'm getting reoriented. The ordinances will be presented. That is a notice of public hearing. Who's controlling it? You got it. Alright, so there are a series of ordinances related to land use that had to be amended based on the North Carolina general statutes update, and their recodification of all our land use ordinances into 160D. So we've been talking about it for a while, it's been coming. Me and Mr. Krulik, our planning and zoning administrator, have went through the five, actually six ordinances that relate to land use. The first one on your screen is the addressing and road naming ordinances, and I'm just going to briefly go through each one. If you have any questions, let me know. I think the information was presented in your packet, so if you have any questions that stick out, please let me know. Our addressing and road naming ordinance had to be amended, and that is reflected by the date of the amendment on the first page. Some of the highlights, the green ones come from Mr. Krulik, and he is available if we need him, and the yellow ones from me. So the first change, if you look on page four, in yellow, that just details the authority that we made a change to which gives us the ability to name roads in our county. So we changed some of the language there. The next page, there's a highlight in green. Mr. Krulik, you come up just in case you have any questions. This change actually had already been made, I believe, but it just reclassifies the positions of those who are responsible for maintaining our ordinance and the roads. The next page just renames a section in accordance with Mr. Krulik's recommendation. And then on page nine, there's another change related to a change in the position of the custodian of the records and who oversees the ordinance. Page ten, there's another change related to the name of the person that oversees the records and the enforcement of the ordinance. And then on page seventeen, again, it's just changing the name of those who are in charge of overseeing this ordinance and its implementation. So that is all. On the last page, we reference 160D as the prevailing law, and all our road naming requirements have to conform to that entire statute related to land use ordinances, 160D. And the last page, we have a new execution page, and that is all the changes to the addressing and naming ordinance. Any questions for me or Mr. Krulik? Alright, the next ordinance that had some changes is our flood damage prevention ordinance. And on the first page, we see changes in our adoption and effective date. Then the next change, on page three, we had to rename. In several ordinance, we had to make sure that we made reference to the fact that any law or provision that conflicts 160D, 160D prevails. So I won't repeat that, but that is also in every ordinance, that 160D will prevail. State law will trump whatever ordinance we have related to land use, and it does take priority. The next change is... Forgive me, I would be following my screen, but if I move, Zoom will not be able to see me, so I'm flipping pages. The next change has, is that fourteen or ten? It just gives the procedure for appeals. Any appeals under our this ordinance have to abide by the statute's 160D 405, and it will control. So it details the requirements to appeal, but those requirements are also in 160D as well. And then finally, on the last page, we have the date of adoption and certification will change in accordance with, it'll be tonight if you vote, or at a later date. The most comprehensive of the changes includes our zoning ordinance. And so our zoning ordinance has date of adoption changes and also statutory reference changes. We had to make sure that we referenced 160D. The next page just shows amendments in our dates of adoption. And Mr. Krulik highlighted who the positions, who held each position in our ordinance at the time of this adoption. Page six, again, we changed the authority section. All land use authority was granted to the county by the General Assembly through 160D, and so we changed that provision. If you go over to page eleven, one of the big things that happened with 160D, we had to align our terminology with new state law. So from now on, we will compare different types of zoning in terms of conditional zoning and special use permits. So that kind of makes it more simplistic. We will no longer use terms such as conditional use permit, special exception, conditional use district zoning, or special use district zoning. Everything will be falling to the category of conditional zoning or special use. And so the table was adjusted. We had lots of conditional use permit in that language that has been adjusted to special use. The next major change will come towards the end section. If we go to, Paul, if you go to page fifty-four, we'll come back. The law now makes sure that we have to make sure boards of adjustments, planning boards follow specific rules related to conflicts of interest. So each board that oversees any implementation or execution of this ordinance has to follow more extensive conflict of interest rules. And so you'll see that our regular policy will apply, but the conflict of interest rules are more extensive. So not just financial, it'll be familiar financial, and even those that might have a perceived interest in a project would have to abstain. All of those are detailed. There were appeals in, there were changes in the inspections procedure. For the most part, our inspections procedure and our notice of violation procedure already aligned with 160D, but we had to make sure to put the language of the statute inside of the ordinance. Ms. Pulley, if you go back to page forty-six. One of the other changes, we had to make sure our definitions in our ordinance were compatible with the North Carolina Housing Code. And so we changed and added more definition to the definition of building and also the definition of dwelling. And so it has become basically verbatim from the North Carolina Housing Code. On page sixty and sixty-one, those changes relate to our date of adoption and implementation. And on the last page, we had to make sure that our zoning maps and how we keep them comply with 160D. So those maps will be housed within the office of the clerk of the county commissioners. And this zoning ordinance will also be housed there. And so the whole ordinance, for the most part, was already aligned with 160D. We had just make sure that we cited the statute where applicable. The next ordinance is our abandoned manufactured home ordinance. Again, we had to change our date of adoption and execution implementation dates. Again, on page two, we had to make sure we reference the statutory authority of 160D. And on the last page, again, we had to make sure that we reference 160D and its powers, and that our ordinance would be compatible with state law. And then there's a provision that says that we cannot exclude manufactured homes from our county and use any type of land use power to do so based on the age of the mobile home. The next ordinance is our Historic Preservation Commission ordinance. Again, we changed references to the effective date and the implementation date. And throughout this ordinance, we had to make sure that we referenced the standards of 160D. One of the things is they were named as guidelines before. Now they are standards that the Housing Preservation Commission must follow, and they must be in accordance with 160D. On page four, we updated the powers of the Historic Preservation Commission to comply with 160D. There are a few added powers, but all of them must be in accordance with state law. And we reference the particular statutory references, so the Historic Preservation Commission would know to make their decisions based on 160D. And the other changes are based on date of adoption and referencing the statute of 160D. There are also some applications and permit applications, different notice of violations and things that the planning board, the documents they created, they are not law, they're just applications, and they are in here. And Mr. Krulik updated those as well to comply with 160D. And finally... Is that the last one? I think that's all of them. So my thanks are to Mr. Krulik for working with and behind me to make sure that I included all the changes that need to be made. And I am recommending that the Board adopt these changes. We have to do so before July 1st. And some counties will not, but our land use ordinance were such where we, me and Ms. Krulik, hadn't enough knowledge of them to go ahead and make the changes. So we recommend that the Board vote to approve them. Thank you so much.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Kingsbury. Before we go in there further, because this is our public hearing, I ask that the Board of Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Kingsbury or Mr. Krulik at this time? Okay. Mr. Kingsbury, I do have one question, and it's just maybe a very minute thing, but under the regulatory zoning ordinance on page fourteen, I think procedure wise, it says that the, excuse me, under the flood plan, I'm sorry, on page fourteen, the flood damage prevention ordinance on page fourteen. And I just read a brief part that I have a question about. Say, in the order who has received an order to take corrective action, may appeal to the order the local elected governing body by giving the notice of appeal in writing to the flood plan administrator and the clerk. Is it necessary to specify who the clerk is?
That would be the clerk to the Board. So, because they're making an appeal to the administrative body, so we can't specify the clerk to the Board, but if you would like to do that, we can do it.
Well, no, I just, I just read that. I just want to, does it need to be specified which clerk it pertained to? Because if it's not, then I won't.
I don't think, because we only have one clerk. And then related, the body that enforces the flood plan ordinance would be Mr. Krulik's department, and there's no clerk in his office, so.
Good enough. I'm okay with that. Alright, um, thank you, gentlemen. Ms. Pulley, do we have any signups in breath? None for this? Okay, for this portion. Alright, Ms. Kingsbury, if you would give us some guidance on approving this, we have to wait on just a week?
Okay. I think we have put it on our agenda, our Board meeting agenda, so it is one of the items. I think each bulleted land use ordinance is bulleted under the item, so when it comes time, there can be a motion to approve at that point. You don't have to do it right now.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Alright, ladies and gentlemen aboard, we're going to move on if there are no questions concerned. Alright, we're going to move on to public hearing number two, which is the petition for rezoning residential to commercial, which is RZ 2021-01, one parcel, seven point twenty-eight plus acres of land from residential to neighborhood business. And this is a tax map of K3C 167 of Eaton Ferry Road in River Township. So I will yield to Mr. Krulik, and he's already ready.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Paul, are we able to pull up the map? Thank you. So yes, this actually... Okay, so this particular petition, the 2021-01, it's the first one for the new year, and this is a piece of property that is actually near and adjacent to already currently zoned commercial properties up at the intersection of Eaton Ferry Road and 903, near the Eaton Ferry Bridge. It's located directly behind property that's currently zoned neighborhood business and also lakeside business. It's kind of hard to see in this particular graphic up here with the screen, but you can see at the top where the road is coming down to the right, that's part 903, and there's very pervasive commercial properties up there. To the left, up going towards the bridge is also commercial neighborhood business. This is also behind where the fire department is, as well as Bethlehem Christian Church. So there's a 1.43 acre piece of land that the applicant seeking to recombine with a seven acre piece of land for a total of 8.71 acres, and basically making the entire tract a neighborhood business. The intent of the applicant is to develop a mini warehouse storage facility. This has gone before Planning Board at their April meeting. The vote was unanimous by the Planning Board to approve and recommend to this Board for taking action on the rezoning. The action would be consistent both with the county's current land use plan, as well as develop the patterns in the area. I will also offer that the applicant is present, Mr. David Williams, if there are any questions of him as well. And again, this comes from recommendation in favor by both the Planning Board and by planning staff.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Krulik. Of course, ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, so Ms. Pulley, are there any signups for this? Thank you so much. Alright, ladies and gentlemen aboard, are there any questions concerned with Mr. Krulik on this own public hearing matter? Alright, thank you. I think this is on our general number six, I believe, for consideration. Is that correct? Alright, we'll address it at that time. Thank you so much. Alright, at this time, ladies and gentlemen aboard, we're going to entertain public hearing number three, which is the fiscal year 2021-22 budget. And this is pursuant to NCG, our general statute 15912, notices hereby given that the Warren County budget estimate for fiscal year 2021-22 has been submitted by the county manager, which is Mr. Jones, to the Warren County Board of Commissioners. A public hearing on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2122 will be held in the Warren County Army Civic Center, 501 U.S. Highway 158 Business East in Warren, North Carolina 27859, on Monday, June 7th, at 2021 at 6:00 PM. The public is reminded that the budget is proposed by the county manager, and such may change the following final actions of the, excuse me, the final actions of the Board of County Commissioners, which may also be included, changes to proposed tax rate. So at this time, our county manager is here, and I will yield to him for any comments, concerns.
Sure. Thank you, Chair. I have a brief overview that I can provide for our public. And if it's okay with the Board, I'll go ahead and briefly run through that. Thank you. So as you know, fiscal year 22 budget is upon us, and fiscal year 22 continues to be a challenge for us as we enter the recovery. And fiscal year 22 continues to be a challenge for us as we enter the recovery from the pandemic. And so the proposed budget for fiscal year 22 considers guidance that we received from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, as well as our own research into what recovery will look like for governmental entities as we recover from the pandemic. The next slide you will see really just shows you a graphical representation of our proposed budget. If we move on to the next slide, you will see that our proposed budget for fiscal year 22 is $36,311,250. And that represents a four and a half percent increase over the current fiscal year 21 revised budget after we have made amendments and budget adjustments during the current fiscal year. It also means that we'll be using some of our unrestricted fund balance at the level of $939,987. It still allows us to remain in compliance with our unrestricted fund balance policy. The next slide you will see really just takes a look at how our revenues work together to provide revenue for our annual budget. The largest portion of our budget is abhorrent taxes or property taxes. The next largest portion is sales taxes. And then following that, I'm sorry, the next largest portion is the revenue that we receive from our state and federal government. Our state and federal government funds support our health department, our social services department, et cetera. After that, our sales taxes are the next highest percentage of revenue that we have, followed by fees that we charge for certain services. If we move on to the next slide, this next slide is just a graphical representation of our sales tax revenue, because it is a pretty important source of revenue for the county. We budgeted in our current fiscal year, a receipt of approximately $3.5 million, which is the next to the last column. So one bright spot in the pandemic that we have had this year is we have received more sales tax revenue than we anticipated, significantly more. And so we are using that as the same level of revenue for next year without any additional growth, just to be conservative. And that is a trend that all of our surrounding counties have noticed as well. And so that level is $4.3 million that we have projected for fiscal year 22. One area where we did see a significant reduction in revenue was in our property tax projections. We had some additional adjustments because of exemptions that our residents can apply for, and they did apply for. That affects our overall value of our real estate in the county, which subsequently has an impact on our revenue. And so we are seeing approximately half a million dollar reduction based on that impact. But thankfully, we have seen the more than expected sales tax revenue that I previously mentioned. Again, I just wanted to highlight that we will be using some of our unassigned fund balance for next year. Can move on to our next slide. And the next slide really is a representation. It shows you the reduction in our taxable assessed value that led to that reduction in our property tax projections for next year. We can move on to the next slide, which really just highlights that we are still in compliance with our fund balance policy. We expect that we will have a surplus at the end of this current fiscal year, which will allow us to increase our fund balance to above the 30% level that we have identified as our policy. As we move on to the next slide, this next slide really captures how our funds are spent over the course of the fiscal year. So you will see the large orange block is our Warren County Public Schools at 19.19%. They are the largest component of where our general fund dollars go, followed next by our general operating departments, as well as the sheriff's office. And the sheriff's office includes the sheriff's office, our communication center, as well as our detention center. And combined, they add up to approximately 14.5%. We can now move on to the next slide. I just wanted to briefly look at some of the highlights in our budget for you to consider this year. As you can see, the Warren County Public Schools expenses there. And we have highlighted some of the dollars that they would receive. Capital dollars using sales tax funds and lottery funds are some of the highlights that I wanted to bring to your attention. We know that they have significant capital need, and we wanted to make sure that we help them work on those projects during the next fiscal year. If we move on to the next slide, this just captures our funding level for schools over the past six years. We can move on to the next slide. Additional items that we have in the budget for you to consider are broadband implementation at $175,000. We have spoken with you about expanding broadband here in the county. Right now, we know that Charter is the company that the county is intending to work with. We're just in a wait mode right now while we work on what that implementation looks like here in the county. But we kept the funding level at the same level that you all approved last year to make sure that we will be ready when Charter indicates that they are ready to move forward here in the county. One of the things that the board also supported in the previous fiscal year was our compensation study. We know that the compensation study had a total impact of $1.4 million, which we know we were not able to fund in one year. And so we have chosen to do a modified implementation over the course of three years. Our county staff will see raises. They started in January this year. They will receive, if you all approve the budget as proposed, another one in July. And then in the next fiscal year, fiscal year 23, another raise in July. Mr. Kingsbury, Mr. Krulik just mentioned to you the chapter 160D approvals that you all will consider. Well, another part of that is we have to update our comprehensive plan, and we have identified funds in our budget for next year to allow us to go through that comprehensive process. That will be a process that will last six months to a year, where we will have the whole community engaged in thinking about how we want Warren County to look in the future, and making sure our comprehensive plan aligns with our interests as far as economic development and what we want to see here for equality of life in Warren County. Can we move on to the next slide? The budget supports equipment, just as we normally do. We are financing new vehicles. We had a presentation from the Warren County Rescue Squad. We have additional dollars identified for them, as well as additional dollars identified for support of our Warren County volunteer firefighters. Can move on to the next slide. During your deliberations this year, there were a couple of items that we have added that were not initially included. And that is a litter control pilot program at $35,000. And we also have additional general fund support for a volunteer firefighter, paid volunteer firefighter initiative at $80,000. We can move on to the next slide. The fiscal year 22 budget also includes funding for our capital improvement program. We have approximately $3.5 million for our capital improvement program. Last year, we started a satellite recreation program funding pool. Those funds remain in the budget, as well as our nonprofit funding at about $40,000. We have experienced some inflation with our insurance. We are part of a North Carolina health insurance pool. And we think that the inflation that we have seen is less than we would have seen on the open market. A significant item that we have in the budget for next year is a retiree health insurance program. We think of this as a recruitment tool for the county. As we know, we have to compete with our neighbors related to compensation. And retiree health insurance is an area that we have received feedback on that we think employees will value as they get closer to the retirement age. This will provide them with health insurance during the gap period between when they may have retired and when they're eligible for social security. We can move on to our next slide. The budget does fund a few new positions in the health department, EMS, and a proposed community services department, as well as animal control. Next, you will see contributions to Vance Graham Community College, our forestry service, and our late Gaston weed control. These are just normal items that are in our annual budget that most people may not be aware of. Just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. So in summary, fiscal year 22 does present some unique challenges for us. We have not seen a pandemic like this before. And so we want to be conservative and strategic in how we deal with our priorities for the county. We also want to make sure that we are preparing for our long-term infrastructure needs by paying special attention to our capital improvement plan, which we are hoping will help us systematically plan for those long-term needs over the county. And we're doing that in five-year increments. And I think we can move on to the next slide. So that brings us, we also include a department reorganization as well. And just to make sure that we are on top of the challenges that we're facing, again, we want to make sure that we just closely monitor our budget to make sure we can address any challenges to come up as we are in the pandemic recovery. And we can go ahead and move on to the last slide. Just wanted to remind you all, as well as our public, that all of our budget documents have been online and available for the public to review as well. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, for that presentation. At this time, I will yield to any board of commissioner have any questions, concerns about the proposed budget. All right. Ms. Pulley, are there any signups? All right, thank you. All right. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, that concludes, that concludes our public hearings. And we'll move on to item number one, which is our regular meeting agenda, which is we adopt our suggested agenda. So the board entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that we adopted our suggested agenda.
It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Baker, second by Commissioner Powell, that we adopt our suggested agenda as been presented and stated here. Is there any discussion? Here none, all in favor side. Post nay, motion is carried. Item number two, which is our citizens' comments, which is our regular board meetings. Ms. Pulley? Three signups, okay. Each sign up will have five minutes, please. If you would, call the first citizen's comment, please. Ms. Herring? How you doing tonight? We welcome you to our meeting. Yes, ma'am.
But I absolutely love Warren County. That's why I'm here. And I couldn't quite figure it out, but I knew I was supposed to be here this evening. And I figured it out while Mr. Jones was speaking. It had to do with the future of Warren County. And that's mine, at the heart of what I do a lot of times. A quick history, for 27 years, I commuted back and forth to RTP. Never left Warren County, never moved there. My husband commuted back and forth to Button for 20 years. We never left. We thought about it, we talked about it, but we never left. Because we love the peace of Warren County. We love the space of Warren County. I mean, it has been said that we are land-rich and cash-poor, but that's okay. Because a lot of times riches are not in cash. Riches are in having a peaceful living, people you can trust. But I'm here this evening because I'm asking the county commissioners to work with some of the citizens of Warren County to come together in a forum to discuss noise and nuisances in Warren County. I'm very well aware that we have a federal case in Warren County that put a stop to some work we were doing on a NOAA's ordinance. But I also understand from working in RTP that we don't tell people what we can't do. We tell people what we can do for them. And it may not be what the people actually wanted at that moment, but as long as we are working towards a goal, it has been said that slow progress is still progress. And so I'm asking that we can come together and discuss what we see in our neighborhoods and what we hear. We have some issues. It's also been said that when the bubble appears on the surface, there's some rotten stuff underneath. And it's been there a while. And bubbles bounce up every once in a while. It bounced up in my neighborhood and was still there last month, two Saturdays in a row. One was a quinceanera, and we heard music in our bedroom with the doors closed and the windows closed until 12:00 midnight. And you would have thought the quinceanera was going on in the living room of our house. It was just that bad. And there are others. There are people who won't come here, though, in a three or five-minute session to express themselves. Because first of all, it might take them that long to kind of get it to where they can get it out. But I'm very, very much concerned. What we have is people taking matters into their own hands when government and law enforcement doesn't protect them. They feel like they're not protected. Sometimes that may not even be the case. But when we talk to each other and help each other to understand where we are, then it gives people hope. And we work towards a common goal. I think there are some people who are really confused about what they can do, how much noise they can make and for how long. And my husband may even want to speak on that point. But I also understand when intelligence reports come to us and we see something bad coming, or we think there's the potential for something bad coming, then we take action and we do what we need to do. This is an intelligence report. You can take it as this tonight. We have some issues in our neighborhoods with noise, just as there was some intelligence in a lot of areas a little while back, and some movements were made. And I didn't see the one here in this county until I just happened to been looking at Facebook and one of my friends had video. That's when I found out about it. And I try to be aware of what's going on. I'm speaking from the heart tonight. And I don't want you to think that here is someone else just standing before us who has a gripe. It's not a gripe. It's a serious situation. And if we want to go forth as Mr. Jones has expressed so well this evening, then we have to look at nuisances and noise as one of them. I worked in an environment for, I believe it was close to a year in RTP, where we expanded in the laboratory that I worked in. And our goal for that year was higher than it was the previous year in how much work we were supposed to get through. They knocked that walls, the workers talked loud. It was nothing separating us from the noise, except three to five millipastas from ceiling to floor. And each day, I wanted to run out of that building crying.
Ms. Herring? Ms. Herring?
I understand.
Now, I'll give you additional 30 seconds. Go ahead, please.
I'll wrap it up. But if you haven't experienced it, you don't know. But if you haven't experienced it, you don't know. Some of us did leave out of our workspaces, went on another floor, went into another building because the noise is just that bad. And that's why they use it as a method of torture, even in the military. I thank you for listening to me this evening. Again, I believe we need a forum where the citizens can just sit and talk with you who represent us in the county. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Bulley?
David Herring.
Mr. Herring?
Good evening. I thank you, Commissioners, for giving this opportunity to speak to you. As my wife has already spoke, it's about the noise in the county. We had started working on a noise ordinance. Been on for two years now. I know COVID has put a lot of things back and set us back, but we're starting now to operate once again. And I'd just like to know from the Commissioners, where are we now with this noise? I'll say pollution, because that's what it is. It's not really a nuisance, it's noise pollution. When it comes to the point wherein someone staying over a mile away from your house is having a party and the noise is in your bedroom, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure the noise is too loud. It doesn't take that. I called the Sheriff's Department three times, a little over weekend on a Saturday evening, because the noise was just that loud, and my wife told you what the situation was, a party. In that particular home, there's always some type of noise, whether it's shooting, whether it's partying. And basically, the deputy told me his hands were tied. This is a gray area. He told me that basically, they could play their music as loud as they wanted to to 12 o'clock at night. These are his exact words. And I told him, that's not right. It's not right. And he said, well, our hands are sort of tied. I'm here tonight, just as my wife. We have a noise ordinance. And on the surface, it looks really good, but when you dig down into it, it does not protect the people, it does not protect the citizens of Warren County. There's other areas of the county that I'm sure did not go through this type of noise, I'm sure. We are no different. This is a quiet community in the Afton community fair party, has been for years. Now, it's at the point wherein there's ATVs up and down the road, there are shootings, there's parties, there's loud music. This morning, at four o'clock in the morning, I was awakened by loud music, somebody coming down the road, playing just that loud. And I'm saying this to let you know, it's not just a problem in Warren County, it's a problem in this state. I was in, on Daveney Drive in Henderson, where they were a total of about 15 ATVs took over Daveney Drive, and they were driving on both sides of the road, doing willies, and people had to get out of the way. It shouldn't be. It shouldn't be. And I'm appealing to you because the Sheriff's Department said there's nothing different. So I asked them, what is my next recourse? And they said, you need to talk to the Commissioners. So I'm here. I'm here to letting you know, it's a problem in Warren County. It's a problem. We have citizens who just get fed up with it, and then they quit matters in their own hands. It shouldn't be. I thank you for your time. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Herring. Ms. Bulley?
Floyd Davis.
Mr. Davis?
Good evening to everyone. I won't take the five minutes, I just wanted to follow up on what my brother and my sister and my neighbors have brought already. I was away from North Carolina, and I came back to North Carolina to enjoy my retirement. But I cannot enjoy my retirement if I have to, every, on the weekends, I have to listen to loud music at 12 o'clock at night. I cannot enjoy my retirement. I cannot enjoy my retirement on the weekends when we have four wheels coming through our road, running up and down the road like they own the whole road. I cannot enjoy my retirement. And everything they have spoke on this evening is that, one thing is I, they get a call, they got a call for the Sheriff's Office, and I get a message, they said, well, we will send someone out. But this never happened, and these people continue to do this on the weekend, and we, I would like to know, what can we do about this? Because it needs to be something done about it. Because I came back here to enjoy my retirement, and my family, and my friends, and my neighbors. And I cannot do it this way. And this is all I have to say. I just look, I hope and pray that something be done about it before it really get out of hand. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any additional comments? Thank you, Ms. Bulley. Respectfully, so not in light of the citizens' comment, but I can't think of a better time now to make this announcement, but the Board of Commissioners said, and a couple of citizens already decided to have a, basically a Q and A session with the citizens. And this is going to transpire on, excuse me, June 16th, is that right, Mr. Jones? We talked about that, June 16th at 5:00 PM. And basically, it's going to be an address to the citizens of where we are, where we've been, and where we're going when it comes to many different issues in the county. We're going to call it basically a Q and A session that you'll be able to come out, and I'm going to give a brief overview about where the county stands and where we're going. This will be publicized, of course, to the Board of Commissioners. You don't have to be here, but if you decide to come, we will be here at 5:00 PM, 5:00 PM, and before the Board of Commissioners' regular work session that evening. And we just ask the public to come out, and we will not be addressing one particular issue, but we try to have a holistic view about where we are as a county. And we try to address some of the things that we know that citizens are very much concerned about. So we ask that you come out on June 16th before our board meeting, 5:00 PM. I know I'll be here and a couple of Commissioners, so that they will be here also. And we have a brief, I'll give a brief, maybe a 10 to 15-minute overview about where the county stands, and then from there, we have a little Q and A session. And respectfully, we may be give some insight about where we're going as a county. So we'll move on from that, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, we've read our citizens' comment, and we're going to move on to item number three, which is our consent agenda. The Board entertain a motion for approval of our consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, we approve the consent agenda.
It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Hunt, second by Commissioner Baker, that we approve our consent agenda as stated and presented. Is there any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, it's aye. Post nay, motion is carried. Item number four, which is County Manager's Update, Mr. Jones, you have the floor, sir.
Sure, thank you, Chairman. I have a few items for you this evening. The first one you see references the budget overview that I previously provided for you this evening, so I don't have anything additional for you with that item. The next one has to do with employee service awards. I just wanted to remind the board that we are planning for Friday, June 18th, to have Employee Service Awards and Employee Picnic. And we are planning to allow employees who will attend the picnic to leave work a little early on that date. That's going to be June 18th, 2:00 PM. And so some of our county offices, if all employees attend, will be closing early on that date. And so we wanted to get that message out to the community as early as we could, and we will put notices up where possible that we will be closing early on June 18th for that event. Any questions? This evening, we also have two updates. We have Dr. Brake with our monthly COVID update, and following Dr. Brake, we will have Ms. Perry, our interim DSS Director, talking about Medicaid transformation, the Medicaid transformation process that's moved forward and will be effective as of July 1st. And so we wanted to receive an overview about that and how it will impact our county residents. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Brake, thank you.
All right, Dr. Brake, how are you doing this evening?
Good evening.
Good, thank you.
I am here to provide an update in three areas. First, I wanted to provide an update on our COVID-19 cases, and then also talk to you about our vaccine clinics and the transitions we're making with those clinics, and finally talking about vaccine products. So these are our COVID-19 cases. We currently have 1,835 total cases in Warren County. I have to say that we are at a point where we are starting to have days where we don't have any new cases, which is exciting. I think that has not happened probably since September of last year. So we have, out of those 1,835 cases, 1,812 that are considered recovered cases. We have 20 individuals that have passed away from COVID-19, and I'm happy to say that we don't have any hospitalized cases at this point, so that is good news as well. And as of this afternoon, we only have three active cases. So I really want to commend our residents, actually, for just taking precautions and doing what they can to prevent the spread of COVID-19. I know this has been a difficult year and a half for everyone, but we are seeing improvement in our cases, which we had not been seeing before. So we are seeing that the numbers are leveling off, and again, not having daily cases each day. So in response to the slowing down of the demand for vaccines, we have shifted from holding mass vaccination clinics to weekly in-house clinics. So these are smaller clinics held at the Health Department, and we are also focusing on community-based vaccine events. So with that, we are working with our local providers here in the county, faith-based and community-based organizations to conduct vaccine clinics out into the community. So we're trying to get them, make them more accessible in different areas of the county. So tonight, I just wanted to share information on two upcoming events. One is on this coming Friday, June 11th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Kim's Vineyard and Winery, and this is located at 408 Largo Road in Norlina, and this is in the Afton community. And so we are partnering with Kim's Vineyard and Game Free Incorporated out of Henderson to have a vaccine clinic. As a part of this clinic, Game Free will be providing food boxes and PPE to those who come to get vaccinated while supplies last. We also have scheduled an evening vaccine event on June 15th. And this event will be held from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM at Perfecting Praise Ministries in Norlina, where Bishop Terrell Austin is the pastor. And so this clinic will be held, the church is located at 205B Center Street in Norlina, and the church's phone number is 252-213-5337. So as we hold these events in addition to our in-house clinics, individuals can call to the Health Department if they have questions about them, if they would like to schedule an appointment, even at the event, you can schedule an appointment, and walk-ins are also welcomed. And I also want to take this opportunity to remind everyone that transportation services are still available for anyone who has a vaccine appointment, but they don't have a ride. So in Warren County, you can contact cards, and they will schedule, let them know when your appointment is, and they will pick you up, take you to your appointment, and also return you to your residence. So the number for cards is 252-438-2573. And if you're under 60 years old, you can call the Senior Center, and they will also assist with transportation. So when we look at our vaccine progress in Warren County, 43% of our population has had at least one dose, so they've been partially vaccinated, and that represents 8,499 doses that were administered. About 40% of the population is fully vaccinated, which means that they've had both their first and second doses, and it has been two weeks since their last, since their second dose. Or they may have gotten the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. So that 40% represents 7,886. So we do know that Pfizer vaccine has been approved for 12- to 17-year-olds now. Moderna and J&amp;J are still for 18 years and older. So right now, all the vaccine providers in Warren County have Moderna. We have been told that Moderna is seeking approval to provide vaccines to, for 12- to 17-year-olds, and we expect to hear sometime this month if they will get that approval. So out of the numbers of vaccines that have been administered in Warren County, the Health Department has actually given 6,804 vaccines. About 44% of those have been to males, 57% to females, and about 58% of those receiving vaccines are 60 years and older. So right now, we have all ages getting the vaccine. We do need the 50 and younger crowd to come in greater numbers, but we are seeing more of those individuals as well. So I just want to, again, just thank the community for their efforts to prevent COVID-19 and also to get vaccinated. We have a lot of good vaccine ambassadors here in Warren County, a lot of our seniors, and they are talking to people in their community. And we know that getting vaccine not only protects us as individuals, but it also protects our families and communities. So we do encourage people to get vaccinated. If you have questions, I always tell folks, call your primary care doctor, consult with them about what you need to do, especially if you have unique health conditions. But we are here to support the community in any way we can as it relates to vaccine administration. Do thank all the churches and the community-based organizations that are serving as partners with the local providers to ensure that we have greater access to COVID-19 vaccines in Warren County. And that is my update for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Brake. Before she takes her seat, is there any questions or concerns for Dr. Brake at this time? Ms. Baker?
And you're talking about the county alert? Okay, so you're on the DHHS website? Okay, so some of the numbers, if the numbers are not, if they're very small, they're suppressed. So the numbers really may not be listed on the website, even though we may have certain numbers. So for example, I give an example of that is for some of our cases, and even in some of the vaccine numbers, if we have small, smaller numbers in certain populations, like in the Hispanic population, or even some in Native American populations, the numbers are small. So the county alert map, which we showed you all a few months ago, where it was green, red, I mean, orange, that map has actually been extended, and I think we're like a light yellow now. But that does look at the number of cases over a 14-day period. And so the number of cases is over that 14-day period, the lighter your color gets. So we're in a light yellow color right now. So I would say our, I mean, the numbers that we have now are good, and I would say, you know, it's great. And I would say, you know, it's great, and we should just continue our efforts. But of course, we know they could go up at any point. And the number of active cases seem to fluctuate each week. But we have had, the number of active cases go down to as low as two. So that's the issue with the DHHS data. It just depends on how many, what our count is, whether those numbers are actually shown or suppressed in the data.
Thank you, Dr. Brake. Is that good, Ms. Baker?
Yeah, I'm a seven, I'm an ambassador for the vaccine. And I do encourage our citizens. First of all, I do thank the citizens that have taken an active engagement in bringing our numbers down. We really do appreciate it, but there's a lot more that we need to get done. The reason why I'm such a strong advocate for the vaccine is because it's unknown how COVID-19 would affect you. You know, some people can be, you know, A-positive, or, I mean, not A-positive, but asymptomatic about the COVID, and it affects people in different ways. So in order to protect everyone around us, you know, I think it's best to get the vaccine if you choose to do so, of course, based upon what your physician tells you to do. But I am an advocate for that. So I'm just hoping that we can keep encouraging each other to do what's right for our communities and our families. So with that said, Dr. Brake, thank you for your update tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones, I think you see how to flow, sir. Sure, thank you. Next, we have Ms. Emma Perry, our DSS interim director, who will just give you a brief update on where we are with our Medicaid transformation and how it's expected to impact our Warren County residents. Ms. Perry?
Good evening. Just to give a little background, Medicaid transformation is changing the way that people receive Medicaid services. In 2015, the North Carolina General Assembly enacted Session Law 2015-245, which directed DHHS to transition Medicaid in North Carolina health chores to front fee, from fee-to-paid services to managed care. And with that, July 1st, that transition will take place. Under managed care, the state is contracting with insurance companies called prepaid health plans. And these prepaid health plans or PHPs, they're receiving a capitated rate to provide medical services to Medicaid beneficiaries. Here in Warren County, we have approximately 5,000 individuals who receive Medicaid. Of that 5,000, 72% or around 3,600 individuals will transition into this new Medicaid managed care. With this transition, the beneficiaries were given the opportunity to select a primary or prepaid health plan. If they did not appreciate prepaid health plan, they were auto-assigned a plan. 97% of those individuals are in a plan that includes their current primary care physician. So here in the county, we, I am hopeful that we will have community of care that the majority of the beneficiary transitioning to a plan that includes their primary health plan. Also with this change, for the ones who are going under the new managed care, non-emergency Medicaid transportation services will now be shifted to CARTS. And the prepaid health plans are responsible for scheduling those Medicaid trip requests. However, DSS office will still be responsible for the individuals who do not transition. So we will keep one driver aboard to help transport our Medicaid transportation beneficiaries. And in event that, for those unforeseen challenges and issues, we're also going to keep one, that one driver for backup in the event we have citizens who are stranded at a doctor's appointment or was not picked up by the CARTS. So we do have things in place to hopefully address any issues that may come along after July 1st.
All right, thank you, Ms. Perry. I think this is a huge thing for this, for the county, for the state. And I think that we're one of the first, is that correct?
Yes, we are not the first state. But this is going to be the first rollout of the Medicaid transformation. The individuals who did not go to a managed care plan this year in July, they will be transitioning to the new plans effective July 1st, 2022.
All right. Will we, will we have a, I guess, a state representative that's going to be housed here? Or it's still going to be coming out of your office?
As far as...
How these plans are, they're going to be assigned or?
No, they're, the state actually have a broker. And the primary, the citizens must contact the plans themselves for information. We were directed not to provide that information and to refer the citizens, the Medicaid beneficiaries, to their plans themselves.
Okay, all right. Board of Commissioners, are any questions, concerns for Ms. Perry? All right, and this is July 1?
July 1.
Sounds like we better hold on.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Perry.
You're welcome.
Mr. Jones? Thank you, Chair. I have one final item for you this evening. We have received a notice from Vance County that it's time for us to re-sign and approve our interlocal agreement that we have with the five counties in our region, Franklin County, Vance County, Halifax County, and Granville County. We work together on an initiative called Stepping Up Initiative. And the purpose is for us to reduce the number of individuals with mental illnesses or substance use disorders that are incarcerated and become frequent flyers in our detention centers and jails. And so the county has been a part of this initiative for the past five years. And so it expires on June 30th of this year. And so I provided you with a copy of the amendment to the agreement so we can extend it for another five years, as well as a resolution for the board to approve. And I just wanted to bring it to your attention. Commissioner Baker serves on the Stepping Up Initiative as the commission's representative. And we think that this has actually been a great benefit to the county. We have Dr. Brake, we have our sheriff's office, and our DSS office, all working together, having conversations about members of this community that are impacted by these issues, so we can get them the wraparound services that they need. So I'm recommending that we approve this, and we can bring this back to you for approval at one of your upcoming meetings, as long as we get it done before the end of June. Exactly, okay. Board of Commissioners, are any questions, concerns about the Stepping Up Initiative? I do want to echo that Ms., Commissioner Baker has been outstanding representing us on this board. And Commissioner Baker, if you want to, your tip, if you want anything you want to add to that, but you've done the outstanding job keeping us informed and keeping that initiative going.
Yes, ma'am. She hopes that we approve it, so, thank you. Mr. Jones, I'll look for your update on that on the upcoming meeting.
Sure, thank you. That concludes my items for this evening. All right, thank you, sir. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to have to double back here to item number five, which is the follow-up to the public hearing. Number one, and Mr. Kingsbury, I take it that we're going to have to take these by A, B, C, and D, and E? Is that correct? Yes, sir, thank you. So ladies and gentlemen, on our public hearing, Mr. King represented in the planning zone, and Mr. King presented a few changes to our witness pursuant to the 160D enacted by the state here. So we're going to take 5A first. And this is to consider approval amendments to the Warren County addressing the road naming ordinance in accordance to with 160D. The board entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the amendments to the Warren County addressing the road naming ordinance in accordance with 160D.
It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Hunt, second by Commissioner Baker, that we approve 5A as stated and presented. Is there any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, it's a aye.
Aye.
Foes nay, motion is carried. 5B, which is considered approval amendments to the Warren County flood damage prevention ordinance in accordance with 160D. Board entertain a motion for approval. It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Baker, second by Commissioner Hunt, that we approve 5B as stated and presented. Is there any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, it's a aye.
Aye.
Foes nay, motion is carried. 5C, considered approval amendments to the Warren County zoning ordinance in accordance with 160D. The board entertain a motion for approval.
Sir.
It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Baker, second by Commissioner Hunt, that we approve 5C as stated and presented. Is there any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, it's a aye.
Aye.
Foes nay, motion is carried. 5D, considered approval amendments to Warren County abandonment mobile home ordinance in accordance with 160D. The board entertain a motion for approval.
Sir.
It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Baker, second by Commissioner Hunt, that we approve 5D as stated and presented. Is there any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, it's a aye.
Aye.
Foes nay, motion is carried. 5E, considered approval amendments to the Warren County historical preservation commission ordinance and bylaws in accordance with 160D. The board entertain a motion for approval.
Sir.
It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Baker, second by Commissioner Hunt, that we approve 5E as stated and presented. Is there any further discussion? Mr., you go ahead, Mr. Kingsbury.
You can go ahead and finish the vote. When you finish, there's another ordinance that was noticed, but it wasn't in that slide presentation, so.
Yes, sir, okay. Like, is there any further discussion?
I got a quick question for 5E.
Yes, ma'am.
For us, does the town have their own ordinance for the historic preservation?
No, they abide by ours.
They abide by ours.
And King Gook is coming.
Town itself has its own commission separate from the county, but there are performatory ordinances, basically, same thing. But the county has its own commission, the town has its own commission.
And when it comes to...
But they still use this ordinance.
Yeah, so when it's in the city, in the city limits or in the town limits, then they're able to enforce it however.
Correct.
Okay. Got it. That's all I have.
Thank you, any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, it's a aye. Foes nay, motion is carried. All right, Mr. Kingsbury?
I kept looking, well, there were six. And I just noticed, forgive me, that there were only five. The notice included another one, which was a subdivision ordinance. So if we could project that one, so we can, you guys can see the changes to that one as well. And I guess we'll have to come back to it and add it as an additional item.
Did we have to have the public hearing on that one also?
Since it was noticed, we can still do it at this meeting.
Okay.
I don't think it's in this...
So what I'd like to do then, just say that at this point in time, we're going to go into a public hearing session in reference to...
Yes, sir, the subdivision ordinance.
Subdivision ordinance, so that's where we are right now.
Miss W, do you have that ordinance? I'm going to... But I'm going to email it to you. I see it in this email here that I sent, so I'm just going to resend it to you. And if you can pull it up from the email, we'll be good to go. Okay. Miss W, you should get it right now. You know, I probably can't. Could you help me? Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Duncan. Ms. Duncan has allowed me to share my screen, and it has a subdivision ordinance. Can the commissioner see it? Can you see it on your screen? Again, I do apologize, I was nervous when I was presenting the five and forgot about the six one, so. Again, on the first page, there was an amendment to the revision and effective date of the ordinance. On the second page, there are, in addition, to who was on staff and on the commission during the time of this amendment, there are changes to the table of contents related to the section changes in the actual subdivision ordinance itself on page three. And then starting on page four, you have an expanded conflict of interest reference, which includes the fact that our ordinance must be in alignment with 160D. 160D does prevail. And also conflicts of interest that may be on a board implementing this ordinance would have to be in accordance with 160D. You see the reference to 160D's jurisdiction? And then on page five, reference to the fact that we cannot limit mobile homes in our jurisdiction based on the age of the mobile home. There is a provision on expedited review of some plats under 160D. Certain plats of land do not have to go by the whole process, the normal process going through the planning office concerning plats. It lists those, starting on page five at the bottom. At number nine, it talks about the division of a single track, and then it discusses that process for expedited review in accordance with 160D. And then on page nine, there is a provision to comply with 160D based on abandonment of an intent to repair a mobile home. And then it addresses the effective date of this ordinance. And the rest of the document has things related to the planning department concerning forms and different processes. Article four discusses that procedure for review of plats. You see, we have adjusted it to comply with 160D and changed some of the old amendments. You see, there was an amendment that was made in March of 2010. This one would supersede that and clarifies who and what process needs to be taken at the planning office. Again, all of these are forms and processes that have to be applied and filled out by someone seeking plat recording, mostly developers, and those are forms that are provided by Mr. Kruel. by Mr. Krulik. On page twenty-two, it starts talking about sureties and bonds that may need to be collected by the county when there are improvements, making sure that developers are not defaulting on any improvements that they might start to perform. We require certain bonds, and these different types of processes are detailed by one sixty D. We already had them in place, but we're making sure they align with the language of the ordinance. We basically just included the language of the ordinance related to releasing those guarantees once the improvements were finished, and also how to extend those guarantees if needed. It talks about the amount of the bonds and the procedure and how long it lasts, and that the planning department and my office will be responsible ensuring the process and making sure the bonds are released appropriately. The rest of the changes are changes of, in accordance with one sixty D, we cannot require all developed lots to have their power and telephone lines buried. That was a change that came about probably due to larger municipalities. And then towards the end, that's just a form. Forgive me, I did leave this, I did, it was sent to you guys in your package. I just want to make sure. Okay. All right.
We're good to go, Mr. Kingsbury. We're good to go. Uh, we all make mistakes, it's all good. We always call it a mistake, just call it oversight, how about that? It's okay. So, we're going to conclude that portion of the public hearing. Is there any questions concerned from the board of commissioners for Mr. Kingsbury or Mr. Krulik in regards to this public hearing? Okay. Mr. Kingsbury, if you would just give me some literature as far as adding a five F for consideration, that'd be great for me.
I think you're able to amend the agenda and to add, no, to amend the agenda and add. Five F would be amendment of the subdivision ordinance.
Okay.
To comply with one sixty D.
Okay. All right, first, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I would ask for a consideration of a motion that we add, amend our agenda to include a five F, which be, which will be a considerable improvement of amendment to the Warren County's subdivision ordinance in accordance to one sixty D. Okay, Ms. Baker, that is your motion that we amend our agenda to include this, correct? Okay, all right. Yes, ma'am. It's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, second by Commissioner Hunt, that we amend our agenda to include a five F, which is a subdivision ordinance to include one sixty D. Is there any discussion? Here none, all in favor is aye. Foes nay, motion is carried. Now, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I will entertain a motion to approve item five F, which is considered approval amendments to the Warren County subdivision ordinance in accordance with one sixty D as of today. Sir. It's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, second by Commissioner Hunt that we approve five F as stated and presented. Is there any further discussion? Here none, all in favor is aye. Foes nay, motion is carried. Thank you so much. All right, ladies and gentlemen of the board, we're going to consider item number six, which is to follow the public hearing number two. Consider petitions to rezonate residential to commercial, RZ two, twenty twenty one oh one, one parcel, seven point two eight plus acres of land from residential to a neighborhood business at a tax map of K three C one six seven off Eaton's Ferry Road in River Township. The board entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chair.
Okay. She got some more, Mr. Hunt? Sir. It's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, second by Commissioner Hunt that we approve item six A as stated and presented. Is there any discussion? Here none, all in favor is aye. Foes nay, motion is carried. Thank you very much. Item number seven is consider approval of health service agreement with Southern Health Partners and Warren County Detention Center and authorized county manager to execute these documents. It says here, it's presented by the sheriff, so Mr. Jones, I will, I'll hear to you.
Thank you, Chair. As you mentioned, this is a document that you all, or an agreement that you all approve annually. This is for our medical services at the detention center. The only thing I would like to add is the annual amount is eighty thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars and twelve cents. Sure. Please. Eighty thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars and twelve cents. Yes, sir.
All right, board of commissioners, the board will entertain a motion that we approve item number seven as stated and presented at a cost of eighty thousand five eighty-six and twelve cents.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve agenda item seven as presented.
Sir.
It's been properly motion by Commissioner Hunt, second by Commissioner Baker that we approve item number seven as stated and presented. Is there any discussion? Here none, all in favor is aye. Foes nay, motion is carried. Item number eight, agreement with the Right Mind Machine Rooms Incorporated in Warren County Parks and Recreation in amount of forty-six thousand seven twenty for asphalt walk-in trails at Winona Earnest Recreation Park and authorized county manager to execute this contract. Mr. Jones?
Well, thank you, Chair. As you know, at Winona Earnest Park, this summer, our renovations will begin to take place because we have received a part of grant. So this summer, we will see the basketball court get rebuilt, the tennis courts will be resurfaced, and we also would like to move forward with this walking trail. This is the same company that will be rebuilding the basketball court, so we can engage them to work on these projects this summer.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. The board entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve agenda item eight as presented.
Sir.
It's been properly motion by Commissioner Hunt, second by Commissioner Baker, that we approve item eight as presented and stated. Is there any further discussion? Here none, all in favor is aye. Foes nay, motion is approved. Okay. All right, ladies and gentlemen of the board, we'll be considering item nine, which is the finance director's request, and we're dealing with nine A first, so.
Good evening, everyone.
All right, Mr. Fanks, we'll hear to you, glad sir.
All right, item A is a budget amendment number twelve. As you know, as we began to wrap up the end of fiscal year, we started to take a look at departments, make sure there's no overspending violations. So this amendment is to ensure that there are no spending violations and that we are in compliance with the local government fiscal and control act. So this amendment is to increase appropriations in the departments listed, totaling one hundred and twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars. And the source of revenue, revenue for this is sales tax, as Mr. Jones stated earlier. We receive a good amount of sales tax revenue this year. And to not go into our fund balance, we're going to use that money to capture the possibility of overspending in some of these departments.
All right. I guess, Mr. Fanks, this, this is basically, I guess, a buffer for each of these departments?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, board of commissioners. If you choose to do so, entertain a motion for approval, or if you have any questions for Mr. Fanks.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the budget amendment number twelve, in a total amount of one hundred twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars.
It's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, second by Commissioner Hunt that we approve item number nine as stated and presented. Is there any further discussion? Here none, all in favor is aye. Foes nay, motion is carried. Item nine B, which is considered approval audit contract, the audit contract with Winston Williams and Creach Evans and Company, L P, in the amount of six-six thousand three hundred for audit fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Still, I think you want to stress about this, Mr. Fanks.
This is the third year in their contract for fiscal year twenty-one. The only update that I have regarding this contract is last year, there were some updates regarding like ending dates, but this year, the ending date is effective October thirty-first, where last year, they extended it to December thirty-first, but this year is back to normal, where it's October thirty-first as the effective end date.
Okay. All right, board of commissioners, the board entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the audit contract with Winston Williams, Creach and Evans and Company, L L P, in the amount of sixty-six thousand three hundred dollars for audit for the fiscal year of twenty twenty-one.
Sir. It's been properly motion by Commissioner Baker, second by Commissioner Hunt that we approve item nine B as stated and presented. Is there any further discussion? Here none, all in favor is aye. Foes nay, motion is carried. Item number ten, just consider the petition for special assessment for roads improvement, and it's required by the roads improvement program, the Pleasant Hills subdivision property owner, has provided petition for the Warren County to levy a special assessment for critical infrastructure for roads improvements. And I will hear to Mr. Jones to give us a brief overview if he chooses, is that, you looking at Ms. Duncan?
Right.
Okay, so I need to be looking at Ms. Duncan today. All right.
Hey, good evening, everybody. So we did receive, the county received a petition from the owner of the Pleasant Hills subdivision, which is an existing subdivision that was actually created back in the eighties. I think Ken is gone, but I think it's one of our oldest subdivisions that we have on record. It is parallel to Manson-Axel Road, and you can access it from Liberation Road in Soul City. And so the property owner, Daniel White, is here tonight. Do you have any questions for him? But you should see attached the petition for street improvements for existing subdivision roads, and this is an improvement that is in accordance with North Carolina general statutes. And in that petition, you will see from Mr. White, the request to levy a special assessment for roads improvements for the existing subdivision, also three, the statement that three estimates have been received leading up to this petition, as well as an assurance that the owner actually owns ninety percent of the properties in this subdivision. And then you can see the eighty-two parcels that Mr. White owns listed below. And I will ask Mr. Kingsbury if he has anything else he wants to add about the process for assessments.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan. The petition has been reviewed, and it is good in its form, and it complies with the requirements of general statutes and our policy. After we do the, they're doing the due diligence now related to the cost, but once that is established, we'll come back to the board to start the process with our preliminary assessment of road, so everything's good legally.
Thank you, Mr. Kingsbury, Ms. Duncan. I would just like to highlight the fact that the developer is here tonight, and I started talking too much, and I'm gonna hear to Commissioner Hunt also, because that's within his district. He's right back there. Yeah, but this is a major development for Warren County that's been existing for a number of years, and we talk about affordable housing and housing within itself. This is a great task that's gonna be heading up here. So with that said, I'm gonna hear just a little bit to Commissioner Hunt, because this is his district, and I'm gonna let him go further as far as introducing the developer, if he chooses to do so. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say that I think this is a great opportunity for Warren County and to, to have a partner outside of the county that's willing to come in to, to look at possibly developing in the county, and I just think it's, it would just be good if we supported this effort and we're operating according to, you know, the general statutes and everything. And so I, I just think it's a great opportunity overall. And Mr. White, if you would like to come up and share a few things with the group, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. My name is Daniel White, I'm with a local company out of Henderson called W W Properties and Rentals LLC. We've been located in Henderson. My father actually... My father actually, my father and my uncle actually founded the company in the early seventies, somewhat taking the lead role over the past ten, fifteen years. We're excited about the opportunity to invest in Warren County again. We do have some property in Warren County, but we obviously like to continue that role and do what we can to spur development, do some residential things, and do some affordable residential housing in Warren County, as we've been doing in Vance County over the past twenty-four months. Open for any questions if anybody had.
Well, I would just like to, if you would, if you don't mind, expressing the initial development that you've started already in Warren County in that area.
So we have, we are moving forward with four current houses in that eighty-two lot subdivision. They're located up the corner of Manson-Axel and Sandy Creek, right as you turn in. There's some, four existing houses across the street, we're gonna do those four. I have not, we have not submitted those to permitting yet, they're actually in engineering currently, but I hope with any luck and no more coronavirus delays, we should be moving forward with submitting those permits within the next thirty or forty-five days, hopefully with construction starting soon after.
All right.
Can I just, if I can, can I add one thing? I just want to talk about... I just want to talk about, just real quick, I know more can come about the project when the due diligence of the process, but I mean, what we're looking at is eighty-two parcels, stick-built homes, correct? And roughly a ten million dollar investment.
Well, actually, Ms. Duncan, I appreciate you saying that because it was my, some of my thunder. We know, we know, that's wonderful, and this, this is what we do. This is what we do, working together collectively to, to enhance Warren County, and you know, that's, that's a lot, eighty-two homes, correct? Potentially eighty-two homes and a ten million dollar investment here in Warren County in a, in an area that has been looking for this type of development for a long time. I mean, that is just so wonderful. So, thank you again, and we're going to get back to consideration of item number ten. Thank you, sir. Unless there are any other comments or concerns by the board of commissioners. If not, the board will entertain a motion for approval for item number ten as presented and stated.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve agenda item ten as presented.
It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Hunt, second by Commissioner Powell, that we approve item number ten as stated and presented. Is there any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor is aye. Post nay, motion is carried. Item number eleven, consider approval of date change for the July regular board meeting, Board of Commissioners meeting from July twelfth to, twenty twenty-one to July thirteenth twenty twenty-one, and that is because we're dealing with the first week, first Monday being a holiday, Fourth of July, and then the NACO conference is the next, so this is going to be on a Tuesday for us, a Tuesday for us. I think Ms. Bulley has already spoken with everyone here about this, but I will yield to any concerns or questions at this time. All right, hear none, number one, excuse me, go ahead, sir.
Just really awful motion.
If you would, sir, thank you.
I move to approve agenda item eleven as presented.
Sir.
It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Hunt, second by Commissioner Baker, that we approve item number eleven as presented and stated. Is there any discussion? Hear none, all in favor is aye. Post nay, motion is carried. Item number twelve, which is Board Committee and Commission appointments, and this is to consider reappointment of Clifton Jackson to the Warren County Library Board of Trustees for a second term of three years beginning July one twenty twenty-one and ended in July, excuse me, June thirty of twenty twenty-three. The board entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we reappoint Mr. Clifton Jackson to the Warren County Library Board of Trustees for a second term of three years beginning July first twenty twenty-one and ending June thirty of twenty twenty-three.
Sir, it's been properly motioned by Commissioner Baker, second by Commissioner Hunt, that we approve item number twelve as presented and stated. Is there any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor is aye. Post nay, motion is carried. Item number thirteen, which is consider, excuse me, thirteen to consider accepting a bid for real property, and this first property is thirteen A, and the bid was received from Jamarious Jarvis Chavis, I'm sorry, Chavis, for property I D D six twenty-eight, no bottom row, in the amount of two thousand five ninety-three, and the outstanding balance, outstanding taxing fees on, on the property is two thousand five ninety-three. If the board chooses to do so, the board entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve agenda item thirteen A as presented.
Sir.
It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Hunt, second by Commissioner Baker, that we accept the bid presented on thirteen A. Is there any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor is aye. Post nay, motion is carried. Thirteen B, this is received from Patricia Tally for the property I D D four D one six one, King Drive, in the amount of ten thousand dollars, the outstanding taxing fees on this property are fourteen thousand zero six one. If the board chooses to do so, we entertain a motion that we approve the acceptance of this bid.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we receive the bid from Patricia Tally for the property identification number D four D one six one, King Drive, in the amount of ten thousand dollars.
Sir, it's been properly motioned by Commissioner Baker, second by Commissioner Hunt, that we approve thirteen B as presented and stated. Is there any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor is aye. Post nay, motion is carried. Item number four, which is the Board of County Commissioners update, tonight, we're going to start with Commissioner Baker, if you have any updates?
No updates at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Mr. Powell? Thank you, sir. Commissioner Pierce? No updates, and Commissioner Hunt?
No updates at this time.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, no update, excuse me, Mr. Jones has an update.
Sure, I'm sorry, Chair, but thank you. One of the things I forgot to mention as we were discussing the item we approved for Parks and Recreation this evening is that our swimming pool will be open this week, so June ninth, the pool will open, the hours will be one to six, hope I'm not getting that wrong. We just don't want any of our young people to feel that if they don't have the entry fee that they won't be able to get in. We just want our parents and our young people to use the pool, so beginning Wednesday, we'd like to see people using the pool, so if you could help us and spread the word, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, that's absolutely outstanding. June ninth, the pool opens, it's hot, let's go get wet, eh? All right. My only update is, of course, what I mentioned earlier, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I just ask you that we come out and be more informative, be as, not more informative, but as, be as informative as we can to our citizens. June the sixteenth, before our board meeting, we have basically a, a town hall discussion. I'll give a brief overview about where the county has been and where we're going and what the outlook is, and have a few Q and A with our questions and answers, of course, with our, our citizens. Should last more than about a good hour, and then we'll move on from there. So I ask you, if you decide to come out then, we'll be here, and that'll be, I know, most appreciative. All right, if there's no other business to be decided in this business meeting, all right, Mr. Kingsbury is holding up his finger.
Forgive me, I forgot to include it in the agenda, but we probably will meet after it's done. I will be appointed as the second vice president of the North Carolina County Attorney Association in July, and so I want to make sure y'all knew that, that I'm representing Warren County, and I'm going to make you proud.
I hear you, I hear you, congratulations, sir.
I forgot to put it on the agenda.
Oh, that's fine, but thank you for even bringing it up, that is awesome, we look forward to that. So, if there's no other business for us, I will entertain item number fifteen, which is adjourn our June seventh twenty twenty-one board meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn our June seventh twenty twenty-one board meeting.
It's been properly motioned by Commissioner Baker, second by Commissioner Powell, that we adjourn our June seventh board meeting. Is there any further business to be, to be discussed? Hear none, all in favor is aye. Post nay, we hereby adjourn, thank you.